This conference will now be recorded.
I believe D I V E L Y. All right.
So we're going to call the meeting to order, the Monterey Select Board. It is March 7th and 5:31 PM. We have all three members present here in Town Hall. And some people are wondering who is the fourth person sitting at the table? And it's a representative from Town Council, Ethan Lively, a parent of Heath. So different face today because Dom is on vacation. Melissa, thank you for joining us. We're going to go over a couple of ground rules before we have you up here. So one question for the board is about public comment. So we are doing a couple of interviews. We have a set of questions to kind of keep the interviews similar. One option that we have based on our rules of order is to kind of say, well, welcome public comment after interviews are done to kind of keep the interviews consistent. If there's no opposition to that, we will welcome public comment after interviews?
I think that's a good approach.
So there won't be any time for public comment or questions during the interviews, but afterward, there will be time for public comment after the interviews are done. So thank you for your patience with that. I think with that being said, Melissa, if you want to come up and join us, please. Thank you for being with us. We have all a copy of your resume and cover letter. And just so you know, at the end of the questions, you're going to have a chance to speak freely, you know, ask questions.
First, I'll just give you a copy of my resume as well as sixteen letters of recommendation that I hope you will read and stay asleep to my character and the job I've been doing here.
Thank you. So that being said, and there's going to be time for a brief closing. We're going to jump right into the questions. So if you would, please describe your experience and level of responsibility in municipal finance and budgeting. And additional question based on the municipal finance and budgeting question. How do you and will you work as town administrator for a steady year-over-year tax rate increase? So I can repeat that if you want.
You might have to repeat the second half.
Yeah.
First, I was like experiencing.
Experience and level of responsibility in municipal finance and budgeting, which I think, you know, to summary, we're pretty familiar with because we've been working together. But obviously, if there's something that you feel you want to give an overview or something that the board may not know. And then as town administrator, how will you work for a steady year-over-year tax rate increase?
As we all know, I've been here for eighteen and a half years. And probably seventeen of those, I've been working on the budget in some form or another. Whether it was helping me, we used to have a very active finance committee in the beginning. So we could just help them with the administrative stuff. And then it became more my job to collect responses and prepare the budget. And that has, task has grown over the years. I have to say that as far as keeping the tax rate steady, I think that's a collaborative effort with all the financial parties, the finance committee, accountant and the treasurer, taking everybody's advice and select board's input. It's been eighteen and a half years since I've interviewed.
Thanks for coming on. We're taking notes. Okay, no rush. If you need anything repeated, let us know if you want more time or just a second or a minute to think or grab a drink, please. Not that.
I mean, I will say that I try very hard to control the costs in Monterrey. I want to enable my coworkers affectionately named me Betty Budget because of my approval. I kind of like it, actually. I do, too. I am proud of it.
And so then the way is there's different questions. So Susan, you have the next question.
I just wanted to, like, anything else you wanted to tell us about the budgeting process or how you think it's evolved or where you would like to keep it going forward? Or what will you change about the process if you could?
I see continuing to work with the finance committee and select board to enhance the budget workbook that I created and expanding on a capital plan spreadsheet.
Do you want to be sorry? That can be it if you want. Okay. So can you talk a little bit about what you think your approach or velocity would be about regionalization? But I know that's a totally separate hat in many ways. But how you see regionalization in Monterey's future or which services might be regionalized? What would be the pros and cons and how would you approach that?
So this is a conversation that I've had quite frequently with both police chiefs, past and current, and past director of operations and the current director of operations as well as the fire chief. We have ideas. I don't think we can see a vision yet for regionalizing the services just because of the geographic nature of here. I think Sean is working on a, he's in talks with Otis and Sandusfield. Geographically, they're rather close to us. And I offered my help with that. I think it's going to be difficult and it's definitely going to be more expensive to the towns because we're, you're going to have to have a lot more staff. The insurances are going to, there's going to be a lot more insurance required for vehicles that we're going to have to have. And likely, you're going to have to have substations if it's for any of the EMS services. In the past, we've talked about sharing equipment with other towns. The past director of operations and the current one have not been in favor of that because of, you know, when one town damages it, who fixes it? And the other town here, they didn't do it. But we talk about it very regularly. So I see that at some point, we're going to have to figure out something. I think likely to start with administrative tasks first and work our way up from there.
Is there one between like police, fire, EMS that you feel like is the most likely to kind of regionalize?
I think police would probably be the best one to start with.
Why?
Because of the staffing issues that they have with the new police reform. I think, you know, everybody's scrambling for a solution. And I think, yeah, possibly a shared police chief would help that. And then, you know, combining our forces and the budgets and allowing us possibly to hire one or two more staff. Share in the area.
Anything else you want to add? If you wanted to, if you speak to someone, don't hesitate to come back and say, hey, I'm going to go back on any other question. I have a two-part question. Are you a manager or a leader? Why do you say, why do you say? And then the second part is describe your HR and your supervisory experience.
So I would say I'm more of a leader because I prefer the team approach. I built a great team of employees here. And through the staff that we've chosen, you know, they all bring unique skills to the table. We all have a mutual respect for each other and our jobs and keeping Monterey running like a fine tune machine it is. So I prefer that approach. I think the staff respect that more when they, when you're approachable rather than coming from a top-down. My HR experience, I guess that's a harder question to answer. I mean, HR, I mean, it's so involved now. You know, I think you have to have a very specialized degree and that's your career. I think up until now, you know, I relied on council to help us with any major issues that have come up. And also, you know, in the past, before we had Sophia and the common center, we used to stand with Sir, which is the administrators and managers, as well as the MMA and stuff. So thankfully, we really kind of have.
On the part B of that question, you talked about the HR. And then what did, talk a little bit about your supervisory experience if you can.
So my last two jobs, I was the office manager for a, it was a email company. We used to create kind of like a constant contact, but we did it for car dealerships. So I was the office manager that I had three staff under me. And then there was salesmen who didn't report directly to me, but I did work pretty closely with them. My job before that was Bilder Publishing, which was a subsidiary of Boris magazine, who were a high-tech newsletter, tech stocks and stuff. And I managed a team of about four to five there and did tech support and messaging service.
You have anything else? Susan, do you have anything on this topic?
Like, any examples from things that have gone on, like say, in the last year or so that have maybe spoken to how you want to do that role or in supervising and meeting people or something that, an example of something that happened in the last year that has really worked well, that you want to move on?
I would say that over the last few years, the relationships in Town Hall have improved dramatically. Completely different atmosphere here. I would like to attribute that to more open and consistent communication, from what I understand. I regularly work with several of our boards and commissions, helping them to develop their visions and resources or assistance they need from me. With, I would say, most of the departments are giving me some form of a weekly report, which, you know, helps with the conversation, helps me make sure that there needs are being met, if there's anything that I can do additionally for them. I also meet regularly in person with the director of operations and police chief. With the accounting director and director of operations and somewhat with police chief, we've instituted a new action plan spreadsheet that I'm keeping so that we can keep on top of any lingering items that we've done. Like I said, we meet regularly, so it's not very long this moment. And they all praise it that they feel like they're keeping track of those things and saying on top of them.
Just to make sure that we won't surprise them.
And again, I will refer you back to the letters. I think there's all the department heads are the letter and several employees, current and past, and I think they will see that we can, we can make a difference.
So do you know that one of my pet issues is housing? What would be your approach to trying to help Monterey move forward with getting some housing for young people who live and work in the city?
Because, you know, I have an engineer working on a plan that's bothering them to get it to us. I would see after getting that plan and you guys signing off on the conceptual design a bit, that we would reach out to construct in any other housing authorities that are in the area to see what kind of assistance they could provide us. There are certainly a lot of grants that will help us with the cost.
Do you see any other ways that, like, besides just that one piece? Is there any other area in town that's called to your attention that might ultimately, if we were to pursue it, be suitable or any other avenues you think might be good to pursue?
I've heard rumors, but I haven't looked into myself, that there may be programs out there that we could reach out to people that currently run their properties here that they might be able to get some assistance from the state to offer of lower income.
All right, back to you. It's two-part, I should have first questioned, then you can elaborate and then we'll go into the next. Describe your abilities and skills in researching and analyzing data on various issues and present options and recommendations to the select. It's a long question.
Describe my skills in researching.
Abilities and skills in researching and analyzing data on various issues and present options and recommendations to the select board.
Are you asking me if you offer recommendations to them? Because I think I would need a topic to.
No, no. How do you go about it? How do you go about the research and analysis and coming up and presenting? So you can be like, here's how you can go for it.
I think I've proven that I'm fairly good at research. Several projects over the years. My method for giving it to you, I tend to be more of a list person. So I think depending on what the topic was, I'm more of a, these are the facts that I found and this is what it can do for us. And then get more direction from you guys as to what you wanted to do with that information.
Is there, just to follow up on that, are there any ways in which you feel that kind of relationship between the town administrator and the select board could be improved in terms of like asking for data and reports and then getting it? I know over the years, we've kind of talked about bringing things up prior to meetings and acknowledging that there's the day-to-day. So we can't just immediately have, you know, a report on a specific topic because there may be day-to-day in a town administrator's job role. But I guess, is there any feedback that you could offer as to like how to improve requests for reports and data?
Yeah, I would just expand on what you said. I have asked you guys, you know, if you have information that you need from me to try not to spring it on me in a meeting. And I prefer that you give it to me beforehand. I think the weekly meetings that we are all having individually are really helpful for that. And maybe, I know sometimes everybody's short on time. Our meetings always go in, well, Martha's always going out. So she's always, I think maybe, you know, all could plan for just a little more time with me, just in case we have some projects or ideas to go over. Sometimes I like to think things through and come up with my questions. Sometimes it takes a little bit to digest what you're looking for and make sure I understand what you're asking.
All right, my second part of the question. Can you touch on any grant writing experience you have?
I can. So far for Monterey, I have applied for and received $1.7 million. It's actually $1.72,551.35 to be precise. I can expand on what the grants were if you'd like. Mass Works grant, I received the community compact for the master plan and the watershed management, received several grants for the fire company. The wellness grant for the employees there. And this year, I bought the picnic table for Bill and Bill and Bart. The other insurance grant that we had, I've got backup cameras for the fire department. I wrote the shared HR grant. I also wrote the grant for the highway weather cameras, which the operations board loves. He is addicted. He will show you every camera angle. The open space recreation plan, when we first started the council needing outreach program, Irene and I worked together on that grant. The air-proof garbage can that's upstairs outside, Sandusfield, the Culver project.
We even heard back on that one.
No, we got that one.
We got that one.
Black and gin plants are starting to sprout and out of them. Bitch, you're going out in two weeks.
I'll be striking all the culverts.
Speaking of, and I think we touched on it briefly when we were talking about kind of your work and relationship with the select board. But please tell us about your communication skills and preferences. And if you want to go into detail about board members, you know, as individuals, the board as a whole, as well as elected and appointed officials and residents. I know, you know, a few months ago, we did a communication preferences kind of exam. So I've discussed it with you one-on-one a little bit. But if you want to expand on communication skills and preferences, and then how do you think that relates to board members, select board as a whole, other elected and appointed officials in town, and then residents?
My preferences as far as internal boards and board would be the email, just because I like having the document to go back to if I need to remind myself of a conversation that we had. If we do have a conversation in person or over the phone, I'm going to try to get better at recapping it, especially if it is a very important topic, so that everybody's on the same page. As far as the public, I mean, I think since COVID, we, you know, the walk-in traffic has definitely decreased. So I would say the public is pretty good at emailing. I don't even really get as many phone calls as we used to. So whatever works for the resident is the better option there, you know, whatever they prefer for communications. But as far as me and internal communications and running the town, I prefer email just so I have the documentation.
Do you have a follow-up to that?
That's a.
Yeah.
Have you found it, like, working through OML is always threatening? There's this balance between making sure that everybody's on the same page, but not ever crossing that boundary. So you can't act as a conduit for board members. But we're always trying to make sure that everybody's getting the same message and the same information. What coping, like, how have you balanced those needs and like found a, you know, a solid place where you can make sure that you're communicating adequately with the board members and there's clear communication, but there's no violations?
I try to avoid sending any emails that, you know, may even remotely contain what could be considered as a knee act in this account to it. I think trying to keep everybody in a little, during our weekly meetings, I think I try to stay more general. Say someone's name. I think that's worked pretty good. And then when we get into our meetings on Tuesdays, you know, fill them in one more robust summary of what's going on.
This is me. I was like, oh, wait, you're running, but it's me. How will you contribute to the select board goal of restoring civility and political discourse in town? And, you know, part of that is how do you stay apolitical in what's clearly a political environment and arguably even a political position because there's policy involved? But you have to always make sure that you're being, weighing everything, but not necessarily divulging things you can't divulge. It's difficult, right? And you have to always be careful of people's personalities and be thoughtful and make sure you hear all sides of everything. How do you block that type of?
I think I've built a pretty good relationship with the staff that are here. And, you know, we are such a small town that everybody knows everybody's business and they're. In everybody's business. And, you know, unfortunately, people do come in here to bend in some of this political. I think you can ask most of them to come in here, but I listen to them. And, you know, I try to stay positive and keep and direct them in a positive direction. They probably find it very frustrating because not to move things in the same direction. But, you know, with everything that's been going on with this very unusual situation of posting my job and having to apply for it, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of comments about the whole procedure and about the parties involved. And, you know, I've continued to tell them, don't worry, everything's going to work out fine. You know, so whatever's going to happen, it's going to happen. And I continue to come in and do my job. That's my ability, still seeking money for the town and this and that. So I think I've tried to set a pretty good example for employees. And even before this all happened, I continue to do this after. Just tell people that it's really not as bad as if they can find a creative solution or something.
Do you feel like the general things have, the level of general civility has improved in the last year?
If you're talking about like in the Town Hall in general, absolutely. I think everybody would attest to that. There was a lot of joking and just working together, you know? Nobody feels afraid to come out of their office anymore for being accused of something or any of those things. And I think that we've really, really progressed miles. I think there's still some work to be done with the political side. Being honest, I think there are still staff that have trouble with some of the decisions that the select board makes.
You guys have any follow-ups?
So the next question that I'll ask is how do you ensure transparency? And I think this could be particularly in financial matters for voting members of the public, but I would also extend it to employees and kind of decisions that are that are made by the select board, by the town administrator. How do you make sure that both residents and employees have access to transparency from the government?
I think, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on people at the website that I. I think, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on people at the website that I do. I think I'm pretty good at putting everything and anything up there. As far as the staff, you know, if we ask a question, that's something that I can tell them. It happened during a meeting, during a public meeting. And I share it with them. I also say, hey, all the YouTube videos are up there. You feel free to, you know, not rely on my memory of what happened. Listen to it for yourself. I think as far as budgeting and everything, we provide all the documents with the minutes. People can call me or stop in, which they do, and ask for copies of anything at any time. I'm not happy to talk to anybody about what's going on. In the past, I don't think we did it last year, but with prior previous selectmen, as far as the budget goes, I used to prepare a letter that goes out with a warrant that explained any budget items that may be contentious or that people may have questions about, so that they would have it in hand. Have the warrant.
Here's a question. So what would be an example of something that might be right for that on this budget?
Possibly the fire company. We have a little more work to do on that. Fire company, maybe. I guess everybody, every year always has some comment about buying more vehicles. But usually I just go, you know, line by line. IT may also be because it's such an increase. And they're just providing all the information we can upfront and then maybe having that same handout happen. But we usually, you know, it has to.
That's all I have.
What question do you wish we asked you? And what is the answer to that question? So you get to ask us a question, but you get the answer. We asked you.
What didn't we ask you that you want to tell us about? Maybe you prepared something you didn't get to know.
Yeah, I guess I would just expand. I maybe have some of the other things that have been put into place here that to enhance the efficiency of town hall. And one of them would be streamlining payroll and onboarding, which I'll add that the Cowan Center, I can't remember the two guys' names, but he was the one that forwarded it to me. Told me was very progressive for a town our size and that there was nothing that they could offer to add anything to it. So I'm pretty proud. I mean, we still have a few bugs that we're working out here and there, but staff are very patient. You know, instituting the regular meetings, as we already talked about, what the staff I manage. Once we get half this, I'm going to get back into the departmental meetings and then start getting these trains. I just wanted to make sure all this was done.
We're wrapping up. I mean, we're getting to the end of the question.
Should we mute them?
No, they should stay quiet for a minute. Is this caller able to mute themselves?
Yeah, the caller too.
They can't. Unfortunately, we have to mute the caller for the background noise.
Sit down, sign dialing in instead.
Sorry for the disruption. Is there anything else that you want the board to know on why you should be selected out of this process? Is there anything that we haven't touched on that you want us to know?
Yeah, I mean, I hope that the board will take into consideration my eighteen and a half years of history here and knowledge and experience. I'm a strong woman here and I've worked through a lot of difficult situations and personalities. And I know you may not all like me, but I would hope that you could see that I do this job very well. And I may not be specialized in one thing or another, whether it's, you know, doing analysis of budgets or this, but I surround myself with a very strong team, excellent financial team, and excellent police chief and director of operations, fire chief clerk. And we all work really well together and we bring all of our skills together. And, you know, we've kept this town a financially fit town that it is. I would just, you know, maybe add that I've proven to be very resilient, dependable, beyond loyal, and consistent, which is something that you guys said is important to the town.
Thank you.
It's a big list. Don't apologize. After eighteen now, you'd like to open the big list.
I have questions for you guys.
Yeah. We didn't really have that planned, but we can count that as.
Probably two minutes.
Yeah, a few minutes of.
I was actually surprised that it wasn't on there because usually it is.
Yeah. So what questions do you have for the board?
My first one would be, what do you see as the top three priorities for the TA over the next year?
One, one of them is going to be financial. I think the other, thinking off the top of my head, is housing. And two is Monterey Fire Company itself. Slaver, capital improvements.
I would say my three top priorities would be financial, which is both long-term planning, serious long-term planning, and stabilizing the tax rate year over year, as well as preparing for debts and large purchases. Number two would be IT and computer. I think that we're a little bit behind and we have a service provider kind of quit on us and that's a challenge. We're on the cusp of kind of making the next step there. But I think that's something that I've been, we've been talking about since I've been on the board. And everyone thinks that I'm young. I know things about computers, necessarily. But I know that our systems kind of need a little improvement. And then my third one is kind of bylaws, including zoning bylaws and general bylaws. Both the whole revamp as well as individual ones that have kind of gotten lost along the way. So like the recall special act that got procedurally hung up in the Lake Garfield tax district. So those are kinds of things we're working on and I just want to see across the finish line. So not even necessarily direct responsibility to the TA, but something that can kind of be coordinated and, and kind of going back and what are the hanging problems and clean them up. Because I'd like to see a clear, you know, the goal that we've had for a year or two now is the general bylaws in a single PDF, the zoning bylaws, you know, up to the NTOPA and the MGL. And that's, I think, would be helpful. So obviously, we have a bylaw review committee, but it's important.
I mean, I think compared to a lot of other towns, our finances have been in a really good place. But may like seeing, having a platform to allow for trade or consistency, sort of in both the year-to-year situation, mostly because there's so much, there has historically been a lot of changeover in finance, many in other positions and select board. And every group that comes in has a different view of how things should be. And that's as it should be. But I do think that having a consistent approach, and we're in good shape. Like, it's not like we're, there are lots of towns out there that are in terrible financial shape. And we have been fortunate. But you have to still stay on top of that to keep it that way. So that's definitely, and I think we have a capital plan. A lot of places don't, but we need to make sure that that stays up to date and that it's a, I'll call it a living document, so that it's constantly, and it has been updated. But I think maybe that the board needs to understand better that we're actually doing it. Because a lot of people don't seem to realize that, that it didn't exist. Obviously, housing is my other thing, that I don't want to see our community become more of that. And with an average age of sixty-five, that's, that's the thing that can happen. We need to make sure we take care of our secrets. But to keep our community healthy, we need to be able to have and keep families so that there will be future homeowners. And I guess, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the third piece is. But I would say that just for me, keeping this place like a healthy, I'm going to call it social community. And by that, I mean both politically and socially, to just do our tiny piece for the natural situation where things get so volatile. And we've managed to, like, I feel like we've managed to bring the volume down and restore a lot of healthy conversations. And they're not always easy and they tend to get divisive, but we did a lot better. And I'm proud of that. And I want to see us keep that going and let it spread. And let's make sure that when people have issues, we're approaching them in that way to just deal with problems that arise, because there's always going to be problems. But not let it become a yummy match or fully infected each other, because it's soul stuff. Speaking of my being blurted, sorry.
There's a few more questions. But I'd like to ask you each individually what you have done personally or what tools and resources you have implemented over the last year to encourage and assist the current TA to effectively do their job, expand their skills, and better meet your expectations.
Expand their jobs.
Say it again. To encourage and assist the current TA to effectively do their job, expand their skills, and better meet your expectations.
I can, I can start off. I think the annual review that we've been doing for just two years now, but townwide, I think it's really important to that process. It's only once a year, but it is, it is a very kind of appropriate place to bring up concerns and also strengths and have an open and honest discussion about how the board and the town administrator, you know, see the town administrator role. And I think the process we used this year was maybe not the ideal, but I think it was pretty, I think it was pretty good with having each board member meet with the town administrator individually and go over their individual review. And then have a summer review, which had to be discussed in an open meeting because that's the law. So I think that that is a hu, is a huge step for the select board, how the town administrator meet the expectations of the select board, because they're all laid out there. I think also going over the job description, although it was bound to the contract and couldn't be changed maybe right off the bat. But going through that, which we spent a couple of months on, kind of in conversation with you as well, was important. And, and then I do like to think that, you know, in large part, you know, each board member's kind of meetings and discussions and emails with you and taking our job seriously, which I believe that, that this board does, is helpful in terms of the growth of a town administrator and just pushing each other to think about new programs that Susan signed, or new grants, or, you know, best practice. So that's maybe not exhausted, but I feel like the the annual review, which we've been doing for two years, the job description review, and then, you know, the kind of everyone just taking their job really seriously and not just showing up once we've designed things, but actually reading them and thinking about them and talking to people is good for the board. And I think it, you know, as a consequence of that, is good for the town administrator.
I want to touch on it. I think the annual review was good, but prior to the annual review, because I was a new select board member and I was with you on the finance committee last year with the former HR person, you and I sat down and I gave you, you know, this is what I see right now. So that was helping you develop and you had a clear picture. But I saw it's your strength and things that you needed to work on. And I, I don't remember, August, September, probably four years, annual review.
Trying to think, I mean, I don't know how those things are met in other situations. So it's not like I had a vast, well, good experience to draw on with this. I, I agree that the annual review is useful, but I also think that it's incumbent upon all members of the board to be checking in with the people that they work with on a regular basis to, to make sure that if there are expectations that aren't being met, they get mentioned along the way. So it's not all common at the end of the period or to, to encourage and direct along the path if you see something. And also to be available to the person to bounce ideas off of. Because I know that, at least in my experience with you, some really good ideas have happened when we were spending that time shooting over ideas. And sometimes they happen right there in the meeting and sometimes they happen the next day. Hey, I was just thinking about this. And for me, that's often a really positive way to come to good ideas, is to have those conversations. But there has to be, you know, you have to spend the time to establish the relationship of trust and to keep checking in both sides. Like, if you're frustrated with something, you got to let them know. You don't have to be a jerk about it, but you have to give them feedback of like, eh, that really bothered me. So you then get past it before it becomes an issue. And I, I think that just comes from my perspective of keeping relationships on a sound footing, no matter whether they're work relationships or personal ones. It's the same issue. If you let stuff fester, it usually nothing positive comes out of it. So, and I think it's important because you don't want to wait. You want, and you want to support the person. Also, like, if you see that there's something that somebody's struggling with or a skill that maybe needs to be sharpened, encouraging them to figure out a way to improve that skill, depends what the skill is, so there's no one solution. But I think it's important for the board. And I think we've been clear about this with a lot of the, not just the TA, but like a police chief and others. You don't, you know, you heard me say to Brian, don't you be cutting your, your skills improvement budget and just spending it on your people. We need you to get what you need out of it too and to grow your skills, whether it's going to the chief's conference or whatever that is. So for me, it's important to make sure that all of our people get whatever professional support they need to grow themselves in that job. And that what that is, is going to depend on personnel issues.
Just one more question. The current job description doesn't provide the TA the authority to do things that most TAs are granted, such as the ability to contact council if an employee needs to be dismissed, things like that. How does the board plan to address that moving forward so that you actually do take some of the responsibilities off of the select board and give them to the town administrator?
Ian, please repeat that. I got the second part.
That the current job description does not That the current job description does not provide the TA the authority to do the things that most TAs are granted, such as the ability to contact council, dismiss a lone employee. I'm just wondering how you plan to address that moving forward, if you do it all?
So, since my time on the board, we worked under one town administrator job description up until a few days ago, right, technically?
Yeah.
We've only done one review, in part because it was tied to the contract. And we had discussed revising the job description, and because it was tied to the contract, it became difficult, because there was a negotiation. And that was a little bit tricky, because it's, uh, there's, and there's been things that have come up over the years, like when we got an HR director that wasn't reflected in the town administrator job description. And we couldn't really change that because of it being bound to the contract and because of negotiations that, you know, made it impossible. So we only read on the, the job description, you know, this one time. I think with town council, one of the issues that we were having prior to the policy which we developed, and I think it's not just been one time, I think that we might have done the town council policy a few times, but at least once. We developed that policy in response to basically individual members of the board, the town administrator, and other boards and committee chairs, especially maybe department heads, and various interested parties kind of going to town council on their own and trying to get, you know, the advice that would best fit their narrative. And so by making it where most requests come to the board, which is cumbersome, we kind of eliminated that, because now it's been fleshed out in public. Nine times out of ten, or ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it seems cumbersome and ridiculous to have the request to contact town council come to the select board. It's cumbersome and ridiculous. The problem that we were overcoming was also ridiculous. So, I mean, because we had town council bills, and we can't nickel and dime everything, but we had ones that were just through the roof, because everyone was basically pushing their own agenda on town council. And there were just no central authority. And I think that one of the reasons that I was, because I developed this policy.
No reason.
Yeah. Bringing it to the board meant each side, you know, any interested parties could kind of share their two cents and make sure that we got answers to all of the questions and not just some. And then it also meant, um, that, that I, I think people bring less ridiculous requests when it has to come before the select board. So it's kind of twofold. And then dismissal of an employee is something that we've also discussed. It's a little cumbersome to have the board do it. I think we've, we've kept, I don't think we're alone in that one as much.
Not as much, the contact and that also one as much. Would you see changing these things with it moving forward?
Yeah. So, and then dismissal, uh, is just something that I don't feel like we'd move in that direction of a strong TA. And, yeah, eventually, yeah. I mean, I think they were.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mary?
Hi. I, I think we're going a bit of field from the interview questions, so I would say we're coming up to the end of the time.
Yeah. Okay. And I think I kind of did touch on both of those kind of specifics, probably. And I, I don't know if anyone else had anything I had, but the town council policy was developed before we were even on the board. So I think that is kind of time. So, all right, well, thank you.
You were, you were gonna allow?
After both interviews.
After both.
Yes.
Because I have a question that might speak to Melissa.
Well, there's gonna be public comment after both interviews. Uh, I don't think, it's really public comment to the board, not public questions to interview us. I'm sorry for that.
Which would go off into the weeds, basically.
All right.
Not that I think you would go off into the weeds, but once the door is open, as all the horses go racing out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Where's Roger? Do you have him pinned in a booth somewhere?
I think it's happening about ten minutes.
TA higher fire parties after department ads?
Jay, wait. No, you can come in, Roger. Thank you for joining us. I'm gonna take a, yes, my restroom break. And if anyone needs to grab water, here's coffee or tea for people who don't get bothered by caffeine late hours.
Go for it.
I'll be back. Sorry for the delay.
I'm sorry. When your butt just starts vibrating, you're like, did anything horrible happen, or is it just people chatting? Fortunately, it was just.
One's better that way.
Oh, gosh. It's been a rough week. Yeah, reduces blood pressures. You know, one day rain will free.
Oh, God, my backyard.
A lot of cattle are in the water.
Oh, jeez.
More, boots more in the last week.
It's funny that, that it always was wet and muddy in the spring, and there was always snow. But it, it's just, it's weird. It's like the rain from the last two years has soaked the upper layers of soil. Rain becomes a miraculous. And it's like, it was that way all summer and all fall. Eileen, hit mute.
They're chit-chatting, sorry.
Just hit mute. There you go. I can't actually read it, but I could hear.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, the, the rain is just crazy.
Yeah, my back, my back driveway is just, can't go back there anymore. It's decided to not do any bother parking.
I gotta say, they've been keeping the roads way better than I expected.
Yeah.
Like, I know Griswold a lot, even with this. I mean, there's some bad spots out here as well, they do fight, but compared to others, whatever.
All right. Roger, thank you for joining us.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
So, we all have a copy of your resume and cover letter.
Yep.
At the end of the interview questions, there will be a, an opportunity for you to touch on things that you feel that we missed.
Sure.
But other than that, we're gonna jump right into the questions.
It's okay.
And so there's gonna be questions from all board members, all applicants are gonna answer at the same time.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna ask the first question. Please describe your experience and level of responsibility in municipal finance and budgeting. And as a follow-up, how will you work as town administrator for a steady year-over-year tax rate increase?
Well, my experience, I, I worked for the town of Needham for almost twenty-three years. Fifteen of that was as the, as the resume shows, fifty of that was as the, as the director of IT. I had almost a million-dollar budget by the time I left. So we spent a lot of time, you know, just looking at that budget, line by line, going over that, that budget, and, you know, trying to explain every line item, where it was supposed to go. If it got cut, we had to explain why sometimes. If it went up, we had to explain why. But we had a, we had a pretty conservative finance group. And so if the budget was over, if your line item was over three percent, you had to kind of explain why it was over three percent. And, you know, that's where my long-term experience comes from, budgeting and finance. It was, like I said, I've spent about fifteen years doing that, having to put together capital improvement plans. Also, we had to, this is part of our five-year, five-year process we had to do. We had to put in, put in forms that were five years out, and then it just kind of walked its way through. Every year you put something new, put any updates you put in those, in those plans as well. Same thing with operating. We had to, some changes we had to put in, especially for payroll, for, for full-time equivalents, part-time equivalents, we would have to give a reason why we went more, usually a couple of years out. That's kind of where my experience was in finance. Year-over-year within the town, I think what we, what needs to be looked at a lot is really just going back to these budgets, trying to find some way to stabilize, but not like level funding, but get some, some, that little bit of wiggle room in there on the operating side. Because I think one of the things that, that I saw being on the finance committee was that there's, there's not, people do pretty good. There's really just a couple of few departments right now, and they have line items that are kind of pushing things. So year-over-year, it's just trying to get those people to really look at their line items. And I'm a proponent of looking back at what you've done, those expenses in relation to your appropriation. And I think that's where we need to sort of start looking at things and really try to get a handle on what those are moving forward. And if people, you know, it's, it's tough in some of these budgets, because as we've seen, you know, you might have a fifteen-hundred-dollar line item, somebody wants to increase it a hundred bucks, and all of a sudden, you know, their whole budget, that line item's eight, nine percent higher than where it was. But sometimes those can be put off by larger departments that have, they can sort of take in some of those expenses. But it's just really, I think it's really about looking at those line items, budget-wise year-over-year, and saying, this is where we need to stabilize those and increase or decrease or level fund them. And then, again, looking at things like the, the capital expenses, things that we've had with the loans of trucks and all that, is really just kind of looking how we, how we dealt with it, is kind of, I think that's a good idea, hit it with some, with some operating money and sort of offset stuff with, with free cash, other sort of, whatever other funds we can put at it, because that will stabilize that specific budget, and we can sort of offset some of the other costs as we move forward. But I think really one of the important things is to kind of look at those things that we can control. Obviously, we can't control schools. We can't control healthcare. Those things we just can't control. So we have to really try to control those things that we can, to charge those day-to-day operating budgets, so.
So to get a little more sense of the budget that you were responsible for in Needham, you said it was about a million dollars by the time you left?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a rough separation that you could do? How much of that money was for compensation and how much was for expenses?
Uh, it was probably about fifty-five, forty-five. Forty-five was about compensation, fifty-five was expenses. And we also had, also had to control over large capital projects. We probably, you know, when I, when I left, I was, it was around half a million, maybe six hundred thousand dollars in capital budgets that we were working with, which for us are monies that were asked over time. So I might have asked, you know, three or five years out for money for some project that we were working on. And then we had to implement that project. And so year-over-year, it could be anywhere from a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars upwards of half a million, what we were doing. Usually the half a million dollar budgets were when we were upgrading data centers, things like that. So that's when we had to do big, big projects. But I mean, I bought pencils. I bought paper, computer, printers, you know, you name it, I ordered it. So.
And so just to get a little more sense of what, what you were doing in Needham, you, you mentioned some kind of a finance committee. Who were you proposing the budget to, and then who ultimately was approving the budget?
So the way that, the way that it worked is, the finance director gave everybody their, kind of the same thing that we do here, basically gave everybody the spreadsheets. We went through the spreadsheets. We then had a process where we went through the spreadsheets, had meetings with the finance director, in my case, because he was my boss, I had meetings with him. And then we went in front of the, the town manager with several other members of the, including the finance director, a couple of other people in, that sort of looked at the, the budgets. I actually sat on that group myself when we looked at other budgets to sort of, because to try and make sure that, that asked the questions about technology, because a lot of people forget technology when they're doing things. And so once that happened, then as a group within that department, we had to go sit in front of the finance committee, which I think at that point in time was something like eleven people. So we had to sit in front of the finance committee. And then each one of us within the department essentially gave a, an overview of our department, gave, you know, what were the goods and the bads for the upcoming year, the past year, and then went through a whole series of questions from the finance. So that's how the process went.
What was the total budget for the town?
About a hundred eighty-five million. Yeah, that was school. And school was about sixty percent of that. But there's also a fair amount of, of, you know, they had a significant amount of, you know, money that was paid for these retirees and all the benefits and pensions and all that sort of stuff, and borrowing and all that. So, yeah, it was around a hundred eighty-five million.
And what was the size of your staff?
Um, I had the largest five people that I worked with, yeah.
How did you feel about that budgeting, like, did, did that process end up being helpful or cumbersome?
Well, it was, it was what it was. You know, I, I don't know if it was helpful, it just you kind of got used to it. And, you know, you had to, you know, if you had something that you wanted, you had to figure out why you wanted it. And that's what I mean. If it was, I, I think our, it was like three percent. If you had a line item that was three percent, more than three percent, you had to explain it. So you had to, you had to really fight for things sometimes. On IT-wise, it was more just the software was our, was the largest driver, because it's, you know, just almost automatically went up ten percent, eight percent every year. So that's kind of, that was sort of bought, that was sort of added in. So, yeah, it wasn't really cumbersome. How much is it just you got used to the process? It's just how it was.
Would you want to see, if you were working as TA here, what would you, I mean, I know this is a different question, because the other person's already doing it, but you know how this system works. But, like, do you already, having been on the finance committee, see changes that you would make in how the yearly budgeting cycle goes forward?
No, I, I, I don't see changes in, right off the bat, I don't see changes. I mean, it's essentially, you know, sounds, it feels like the town administrator talks to the departments, gets their, gets their input, and then presents that to the, to the, to the select board. I don't know what kind of relationship the, the town administrator has with those, with those departments, and whether or not that, they say that's a good number or a bad number. Maybe that's something that could change, is I don't know how that works. But, you know, for me, I'd say the only difference I see is, and a change is coming up with those long-term processes, putting those actually more on the, on the staff and the departments. And I, I did this a little bit with the finance committee. I actually asked Jim at the DPW to help out. I had a form that I created and said, here, I'd like you to use, to use this as kind of an example, to see if it works, if all the questions are, anything worked. It seemed to work. And so, you know, we have sort of a start on that process already. And it's, in that sense, you know, there's not really a lot of departments that, that require that sort of, we didn't look out five years to buy a truck, you know, or something like that, or those sorts of things.
Kind of free.
Exactly. That's about, that's about it. Yeah.
I think that's a.
Pretty thorough answer here. Um, can you, do you have any thoughts that you could share with us about your approach or your philosophy concerning the regionalization of services, including what services might be ripe for consideration of regionalization?
Um, well, you know, top of the list is fire and emergency. Well, you know, ambulance is kind of already in that, but some volunteer ambulance there. I, let's see my opinion. My, my opinion is that regionalization is, is something that's just, it's, everybody's doing it. You know, it doesn't really matter where you are. I think that for a lot of places, it really started with public safety, with dispatch. It's kind of where that happened. I know in eastern Massachusetts, especially, dispatch was where a lot of communities sort of tried to find some savings, which is probably the only place you're gonna find savings, is dispatch. sort of tried to find some savings, which is probably the only place you're gonna find savings, is dispatch.
That's exactly true.
I, I, because you know, you go from, by dispatch centers, sometimes you can, maybe through retirement or attrition, you might take, you might lose a couple of people, or you just end up rehiring everybody you knew in dispatch, depending upon how big the community is. But, you know, locally here, through mutual aid, it kind of is a regionalization in a sense. You know, we, you know, we're not sharing, we're sharing services, not sharing dollars, which I guess, you know, outside of regionalization, fire districts and all that, you know, you'll start to share dollars in a fire district. But in regionalization, you know, we're sharing services, you know, if something happens here and there isn't someone, there isn't someone in my way available, you hope that you, Marv, or whoever, we're sharing these services with. You know, since an ambulance or a fire truck, or vice versa, they hope the same, they hope the same thing from us, is that if nobody can make it in one of those communities, we, we, we respond. I, like I said, I, my, my opinion is that it's just part of the way it's going. I think that fire districts as, you know, you're starting to share dollars, whether that actually sees any, any decrease in costs, it's hard to say, because it may lower the budget, but by removing that specific organization from the budget, but someone's gonna have to make it up in taxes, you know, and in the fees that are, that that organization, fire district is gonna have to say, we need X number of dollars per year from every, from every, you know, property that pays taxes.
It's not going to be actually less expensive to run it, it just can move it from one pocket to another.
It's just not our problem.
But it's our problem is the taxpayer.
As a taxpayer. I, I, I will say one thing though, it's, what, what fire district does though, is it does bring everybody to the table. When I say everybody, it brings every property owner who pays taxes. Where now, it's, they, they still do in a way, because we all collect taxes and all these, but it's a little more direct. And it's a, it's a little more real direct in covering the costs, so I don't know if that's good or bad. You know, I'll have to wait and see if it happens again and get my, my bill and see how that works. But I, I think regionalization, like I said before, regionalization at some point is, it's just gonna happen. I just, I just don't know how it's gonna happen for us. I don't really know how dispatch works in, in this, in this area. It may already have consolidated for dispatch around here. So I, I don't really know how it could get any more regionalized than mutually, you know, that works.
So speaking of regionalization, you met, or you mentioned retirement and attrition. So I think that's one of the taglines that we go to is, when there's retirement and attrition, you guys have an opportunity to regionalize. Sandusfield just lost their fire chief. You know, short of retirement and attrition, how do you approach this kind of sensitive subject with people who may feel that they have a lot of pride or service to their town's emergency services? And trying to regionalize may kind of threaten them. How would you approach that kind of a sensitive subject?
Well, I think first, just really trying to understand what, what they are within their community, who they are and how they view, view their community and what the importance is to that. Because if Sandusfield, for example, uses, loses the fire chief, I don't know where that fire chief would come through in regionalization. So I think you really have to kind of understand that, that community and that, that's the hard part right there, is kind of going in, having those, having those talks and sitting down with, you know, people who feel that it's, that it's important to do that. I, I don't know, again, in a situation like Sandusfield, using the fire chief, how that would work for us. Would Sandusfield, would the, would the, the fire personnel living in Sandusfield be willing to take, you know, you know, somebody from Monterey telling them what to do? And with the person from Monterey, if they were for some strange reason, the chief in Sandusfield, how would they deal with things happening in Sandusfield on a, on a Friday night or something like that? You know, essentially makes it more difficult in that, that sense of regionalization. So I think you really have to find out who those important people are within the, within the community, within the fire department. And really just sit down and have a conversation with whoever over there is, is, is working at it. And you know, it's all about challenges, trying to figure out what people want and then try to, try to figure out how to address those challenges and get the answers. Not everybody's gonna be happy, and that's just the way that it is, I think, in a situation like that. You know, we might be, like I said, we went to a fire district, not everybody's gonna be happy. And, you know, with the fire district versus, versus where we are right now. And you, you're right, people, you do see that pride in, you know, with the fire companies, the fire people, the fire personnel.
We definitely saw it with the school recently.
Very much so, yeah, 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 I think that there was, that's really what that was. It was a sense of pride and, and we want to, you know, live our own destiny, you know, and deal with ourselves.
I'm gonna move on to the next. Are you, there's two parts, and I'll give you the first question. Are you a manager or leader in life?
Oh, that's a good question, that's a good question. You wanna be both, but I probably, I'm probably more of the leader type than the manager type. You know, to be, to be honest, I, 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 I have a tendency, I have in the past, I've tried to calm myself down a little bit, to be the one that stands on the soapbox, kind of that leader kind of person, you know, always, you know, trying to give opinions about things. This is the way we should be going and all that. But I, I certainly understand the management side of things, but I think, you know, as a personality, you know, when you do that clickbait on your, on your, you know, Facebook, and you find yourself going, answering all those silly questions, and I might find myself more of a, more of a leader than a, than a quote-unquote manager. But, you know, I understand the importance of, of management and understanding that, you know, that it needs to be somebody that takes responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the building, of the department, of, of the organization. And needs to take responsibility when, when things don't go right and, and, and deal with those, those situations.
Describe your HR and supervisory experience.
Well, HR-wise, I, I can only, I can only put it as to being a manager of, of a department of five people. And that required me to hire people, interview people, deal with difficult situations. I have, you know, supervisor-wise, I expect people to do their job. I'm not there to do their job, they have to do their job, I'm there to help them. I don't necessarily need to be standing over their shoulder making sure that they're pushing all the right buttons. If they're not pushing all the right buttons, we need to figure out how to get that done. That's why we hire people, and I'm there to do all, all the work. I have had issues with difficult employees, I've had a few of them just with, at my time at the town of Needham. I have, you know, had to separate employees a couple of times, or at least once, and.
From each other or from the organization?
Once would suggest, eventually from the organization, they left. Two from themselves, I did say, you know, three different ways, tried to, tried to call them that down. And, you know, I've had, you know, IT is a funny thing, right? In that IT can, you can do IT like any, there's always like, there's always like a different, multiple ways to get something done. There always is, and everybody has an idea of what that is. And so when you start hiring IT people and they come in after someone's been there for an extended period of time, like I had staff that were there for an extended period of time, helped us go in a certain direction. They come in with their own ideas, these new people come in with their own ideas. And sometimes they try to kind of undermine things that have been going on and that have been going on successfully. And so, you know, I've had to deal with, you know, looking at someone and saying, look, this is the way we're doing it right now. I understand what you're saying, I could look at it, but this is kind of the way that we're doing things right now. So I've had to deal with that in, I guess, an HR situation.
Did it work out? Were you able to help them adjust to how things worked there? Or did they bring people over to doing it a different way, or did it just not work out?
Well, that's a good story. So by the time I left, the person was still there, but I had wanted, so we had a six-month, basically we had like a six-month trial period for every department. But for some strange reason, they didn't want to do that six-month trial period through HR. I don't know why for my department, because I actually went to the, to HR prior to this person's six-month. And from, from everything that I'd read and talked to the department manager, it was kind of like an hat wheel for that first six months. And I went and spoke to HR about that and was basically told that, no, you need more than just that hat wheel. So that's sort of like, I had that and then I had to spin start, kind of, I had to start writing things down. And I left before, if that's the point where I would come back to HR, and said, all this stuff has happened. I, I know that this person has since left, so, for various reasons. So yeah, so it didn't work out in a pretty way.
Do you guys have any follow-ups? So one of my, I, I think we may have talked about this as, on your work in the finance committee, but one of my big issues upcoming is about housing. Trying to make sure that we have some affordable options for younger families who are, who are a residential and wanna stay here and raise a family. What would your approach be to trying to address that issue in Monterey?
Oh, that's a good one. I know, first thing what I would do is I would keep track of what's going on down in Great Barrington. Great Barrington right now is in the process of looking at tiny houses, I don't know if you're familiar with that? So and what that means in, in that, in that sense. I think that trying to have somebody else do, you know, I, I like somebody else to invent the wheel sometimes and then maybe we can sort of make a white wall or not after that. But trying, that would be one of the first things I would do. But I, I think that in our case, very similar to what they're doing, it may be that somehow that the town's gonna have to take some responsibility in finding some location to, to come up with a plan for, I guess what we like to call workforce housing now, as opposed to affordable housing, because affordable housing surface, you know, has more negative connotation. But to your point, to that place where, you know, a, a, a young family or, you know, new homeowners can come into the community and, and, and find, find a place to try and bring down that average age a little bit. I, I think the other thing is I, I'd actually thought about this a bit after our conversation, I've talked to a couple of the people. And I don't know if there's a zoning way to, to figure it out, because, you know, I don't know if there's something you could do, something that might be like some type of village zoning, where within a certain distance from downtown, you have smaller lots, smaller, you know, frontages, things like that to deal with. So you can make that kind of housing there. You, you can address it a little more with zoning and footprints and square footage on that and how much the footprint takes up and everything. But you lose a little bit of control when that happens, because then you have to rely on, you know, you have to rely on the person who owns this property to make that and then not rent it or not Airbnb it or not do all those sorts of things, which, you know, it's their right, it's, it's their right to do. You know, and I'm sure, I, I know people do it all over Monterey, you know, there's Airbnb, then all those sorts of things and people are, you know, renting homes, all that, and that, like I said, that's their right. And so I, I think that the town has to come up with a way that we sort of take control of that and handle that, figure out how to do that. So there's no speculate, you know, there's, people aren't just coming in and flipping homes after a few years and how does that work? I know that's what they're trying to do down in Great Barrington. They're essentially trying to own the property, build the houses. And then by owning the property, you're controlling sort of who moves into that, who, you know, how much, you know, their annual income is, the percentage they can, which keeps it, you know, workforce housing. It's difficult, it's not easy. You know, no, no one's gonna build a, you know, a ten-story apartment building in Monterey.
We already wanted it.
We already wanted it, I know. I see that all the time in New York, so.
But at least the ten stories are appropriate.
Yes.
In a community that's all ten-story buildings, right, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you describe your abilities and skills in researching and analyzing data on various issues and present options and recommendations to the select board? And I have a second question, but just we'll start with this one.
Yep. That's one thing that I think I do pretty well. I, I've always been sort of an analytical person, kind of from growing up in the environment of your father being an electrical engineer during the beginnings of computers and all that sort of stuff. You, you kind of end up with a little bit of analytical, I, I, I think that is one thing that I, I do. I like to take in information and research is all just about taking in information and being able to find that information. And, you know, in the old days, pre, pre-personal computers and the internet, you had to go down to the library to do that. And now it's just a matter of finding all that data online and trying to look at things outside the box. And I think that's one thing that I do bring, is I do think outside the box on things, you know, it's, people, you, you can look at things, you can do things the same way all the time, but sometimes if you just kind of just take a step back and look outside the box, and that's a way to gather up different data and look at the data and present that data. I had, at one point in time, when I was working, I, I, I hated going places with PowerPoints. Like if you went to a conference and someone had a hundred PowerPoint presentation and they sat there and read off the PowerPoint, I could, I could have stayed in my room, stayed by the, stayed by the pool, gone to meet vendors, if you'd just given it to me for me to read. So I, I, I've always tried very hard to gather data, consolidate that data. And like, the reason I say that is I tried to, even in PowerPoint presentations, I tried to minimize the amount of, of time and sort of put everything in that, and give the data to people, the kind of data that they're looking for to make, make their decisions. And that was some of the stuff that we had, we had to do, is I had to look at, you know, budgeting-wise and IT, we had to look at things different ways, sort of see how things can be done. And then find the most appropriate way that works within the infrastructure technology that we had in our budget and be able to explain those things and look at that, that data.
So I think, you know, one thing that's central to the town administrator role is not just finding data, but also presenting it.
Yep.
To various people, but especially the select board. So at our regular meetings, what kind of strengths or how do you see your presentation of data, once it's collected?
I am a storyteller. So for me, it's about gathering data, putting that data together, handing, handing it to you, and explaining what that data is. And as opposed to just kind of giving it to you and letting you parse through it. I, I think that that's what that's about, is gathering that data. It's all, it's always a story, putting that data to you. It could be a one-sentence story or it could be long drawn out how you got to that point. But it's about gathering that data, putting it into a format that can be, you know, that you can, you can understand and then sort of explaining what that, that data is and, and how it could help in your decision-making. And so that's kind of how I, how I approach that, that thing. Like I said, when, I, I was always proud of this one PowerPoint presentation that I had, it was one sheet. It was all about things coming and going and, and telling a story as we went through it all. And that's kind of how I approach data, the presentation data and the collecting of it.
The second part of the question is, can you touch on any grant writing you've had?
I've really only done a couple, specific to Massachusetts. I got a community compact grant for Needham when we were changing over to electric permitting. Even permitting, we had paper, it must have been ten years ago or so, we transitioned a little bit less of that to electronic online permitting. And then I also did another ones. And then I also did another ones, uh, similar to one that we're looking at here, the cyber security awareness. I, I did that, um, to, uh, they came in and did a, um, did an analysis to gather, to do an analysis of our own cybersecurity and creating a report. So that's, that's, you know.
But you have some experience.
I have some experience in going through the state websites and that, trying to find those sorts of data.
How often were you working with different departments and officials from the state in your role as IT director?
In the state, not a lot. I did have, uh, some communications, um, most often through COMBIs and things like that. I did talk to the, um, when you were doing the, um, excuse me, the community grants. Those few times, I had some conversations with them. When in my GIS days, I had a little more, um, communication with people from the GIS departments at the state. Because they were trying to take a lot of that data and incorporate it into the state by GIS and those sorts of things. So, um, that was sort of why then it was with state. But again, it's just knowing who to call and knowing the questions to ask. And a lot of times we directed to who you're supposed to actually talk to and should talk to someone you thought you should.
Would you be comfortable expanding on that grant writing experience and writing grants from the town?
Sure. Yeah. You know, as long as, yeah, yeah. I don't have a problem with expanding on that or using the tools that we already have. And we have people in the town that do it or finding out what they're doing and getting their experience. And we'll be forward with it. Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
If you need to get a.
Is there water?
Uh, yeah, on the hall.
I think that's hot water.
I know about that stuff.
There is a.
I want to steal one.
There you go. All the stuff.
I've been drinking that water.
I know, right? It's a big joke.
The next question. Please tell us about your communication skills and preferences. And if you would, to expand on that, how would you plan on communicating with board members and the board as a whole, elected appointed officials and town residents?
Communication wise, I, um, I've always been, you know, sort of, uh, I'd like to email to communicate with people because it does put things in, in space somewhere. You know, especially when it's, you know, specific to projects in that sense. Cause, uh, you know, but I do understand that some things are sensitive and that they probably shouldn't be through, through email. But, uh, you know, communication, I think I, I think I'm pretty good at talking to people and, and, you know, finding the boards, finding those committees, going to them and, uh, having conversations with them. Again, being open and available through, through email, phone, you know, text messaging. I've dealt, and all that sort of stuff with people. You know, it is, it is a little difficult with, um, I, I understand the complexity of the board, especially the select board and say finance committee and communicating with them because it is only three members. So, um, you know, sometimes it's hard to have those kind of group conversations with people that may need to be group conversations. But I think that, um, it's better to, you know, initiate a thought and then wait for meetings. You know, because it's really not the only place you could have, have those conversations at, at select board meeting with, with more than one person. And, you know, it's a lot, the same thing with the other boards and commissions and all that, you know, dealing with. The, the main contact, the chairperson for those, those specific commissions, boards, or the person who's, uh, you know, in, in that department and communicate with them and, uh, and then go from there. But I, I, I believe in transparency. I mean, that's the one thing that I, I think that that's where problems start is when there's not transparency in, in things. But I do understand that things can be sensitive sometimes and that, you know, to have a, you know, face to face with people, the person is just sometimes the best thing. So that's kind of my communication style and how I, how I deal with things and how I work with the, all the different boards in the same way.
What about members of the public and maybe particularly disgruntled? We don't usually hear, everything's going well. How do you deal with communication when people aren't happy?
Well, obviously you, you will know why they're not happy. Because they will tell you why they're not happy. And, um, you know, if, if it's something that I can help them with right there, like if it's, has to do with a department, like, you know, if it's the highway department they're coming in and having an issue with, then I would try and, you know, work that, see what, see what's going on, see if the, you know, Jim at the highway department, if he has a opinion on what's going on and try and work it out. Obviously, if, uh, it was something that couldn't be worked out and may require a conversation with the select board member to kind of with the chair of the select board or someone to kind of move forward with that conversation. But ultimately, I think that I should, um, or I shouldn't, or the town administrator should, um, you know, try to do their best to, to find a solution for it before it escalates. And that escalation, as far as I could tell, is bringing it up to the select board. Because, um, you know, I'd see the town administrator as, you know, even from your, your job description and everything is, is representative of the select board. And, you know, trying to work with the select board and trying to, you know, whatever visions or direction the select board's going is trying to help that. You know, if there is a disgruntled citizen that, that comes in, it's trying to, again, figure out what that is and trying to get it fixed before it gets worse. And, um, and that, you know, the, the person walks away eventually with, you know, some satisfaction, whether it was through working with them directly or, you know, getting someone above the, the select board to take care of it. You know, again, like everything, you know, it's, you want a win-win situation. Sometimes you can get a kind of win, kind of win situation. So it's just trying to figure out what, um, that when both, when the person walks away, that they feel satisfied with, uh, with, with what's happening. Again, if not, then he just has to figure out where the issues are and move forward from there.
So one of the goals of, of the select board, and I know that I'm not, I'm not certain about Frank, but both Justin and I really chose to serve because we were very concerned about the way discourse was in town and the way business was being handled. And one of our major goals was to restore civility in town politics. And, and we really worked hard on that. And I think I achieved a lot in that regard. Things are never perfect. But, um, how will you contribute to the select board's goal of restoring and maintaining civility in political discourse in town?
Well, personally, I am, um, I'm, I'm not somebody that's riles quickly. I have, I have a lot of patience myself. You know, and I think that's a start. I think that not, not, um, flaring up when something doesn't quite go your way is, is, is the start. And, uh, you know, civility always kind of starts with the people at the top. And it's just sort of dealing with those, uh, other individuals. And again, trying to understand that we all have opinions. And even though we might think the other person's opinion isn't the best opinion, um, they still have an opinion. And I, I think, you know, we can take this, you know, we can take this and look at our, our own, you know, nationally right now and how things are, which again, is one of the things that I had to back away from myself. And, you know, I was the kind of person that woke up every morning and looked at CNN and looked at Fox News and said, oh geez, what is, are they not saying what's going on and all that kind of stuff? And that sort of raises everything up. And it's really, I think, about trying to sort of step away from that and kind of looking at things locally. And when you see somebody and they have something up on their porch or whatever, that's just them or what they're trying to do. But at the end of the day, we're all human beings, we're all people and we all have different opinions. And it's really just trying to understand those opinions and not, a lot of times it's not directed at us. But when it is, you have to try and, and, um, to your point, be civil and sort of like nod our heads and, and, you know, that's actually, that, going back to that conversation about the, the staff member that I had, I had to really hold my tongue because this person was very, um, very aggressive in manner. And always found a way to sort of try and go and try and find ways to poke at you. And, you know, it takes a lot of patience, you know, to try and be civil and just not tell them what you really want to tell them. And, and then kind of walk, walk out the door, let them walk out the door and then close the door or go home. You know, and I think that's, I think that's important. We have to, we have to realize with, with, with everyone, it's, it's just trying to, trying to, um, you know, understand that, you know, who knows what's going on in their lives? You know what I mean? We have no idea what's happening in somebody's lives behind their, on board. And sometimes it just comes out in strange ways. And you just have to kind of accept that that's kind of might be what's happening is something may be going on. It triggered something in them and they just decided that, you know, the grass that got thrown in front of their house or the tree that's on, that's, that's just upsetting them and they need to come down and say something about it. You just have to kind of deal with it. So figure it out.
The follow-up question, I, I personally, I think you kind of already like addressed it, but I, I need to ask the same question. How do you remain apolitical in a political environment? And, um, you know, for me, that also means, um, how you, you know, you've spoken already, maintaining your cool even when someone, you know, you can't always tell people what they want to hear.
Yeah. I, um, yeah, I, I think I've said, you know, you know, you need to sort of treat people as, as people, humans. But, you know, I, I've had to back myself down like myself. You know, I, um, I was, um, you know, I'm a, I have a degree of geography and I have, um, a, a deep, um, craziness about politics, international, national, state politics. And, and, um, they have this, you know, my, my family has this same, when things start to get a little crazy with me in conversations in the past, they start saying, well, it's time to hit the dance floor. Which really has to do with the scenario once where we were at this place and music was playing. And I'm there with my, with someone. Is that my car up next to me? Yeah, that's somebody's car.
I'd like to say that's never happened to me, but alas, it happens.
It worked. Yeah, I have the keys up here.
We were in a situation where we were, we were in a, in a place where there's music and dancing. And we were having this, I was having this heated conversation with somebody over politics. And, you know, you know, the other people were like, oh, it's time to go to the dance floor. So it's kind of like, you know, I realized I know when I get to that point. And that's what actually, you know, that's what actually coming to Monterey and after leaving Needham. And, uh, coming here that past year is, you know, through the previous year was really been about, it's been about kind of, sort of losing that, kind of stepping back from that, looking at things a little more vocal with the community and really trying to, to connect with the community somehow. That's why, that's what I tried to do. You know, I raised my hand a couple of times at a couple of meetings, asked some questions and got me on the finance committee. And, you know, I've, um, I, I think that I just really tried to say, to sort of center myself on things and, and try and sort of get, get rid of that kind of partisanship and, and all that stuff. It's sort of what we have in the past, you know, that we've seen happen over the past 10, 20 years and how it's gotten. And it just affects all of us in so many ways and tried to back away from that as best as I could.
Next question. How do you ensure transparency, and I think particularly in financial matters, to taxpayers and residents of the town? And also to employees when the select board, the town administrator make decisions? How do you ensure transparency?
Well, with the citizens, I think a lot of that is just putting information out. Or when you're asked for information that obviously isn't, you know, personnel based or something like that. They, 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 they get it. I, I, you know, where we came, where I came from, we had lots of FOIA requests, you know, Freedom of Information Act requests, we had tons of those things. We had lots of requests for documentation. So I understand the need for transparency. And I think a lot of that can be done. There's a lot of different ways to do that. You know, the website is a great place to, to put things up financially. You know, there are applications that, uh, there are applications out there that you can, um, purchase that, you know, they connect into your GL and all that. And they can kind of put information out there for.
To GL? General law?
General.
General ledger.
Ledger.
Yeah, the general ledger. Yeah, they can take up information and show like, you know, how much budget there is, what line I was taking. There's all sorts of different ways, ways to do it. And I, I do believe that it's important because, you know, that's where, you know, most people, you know, they get upset is that you're doing things without telling them. And it's the same thing with the, it's the same thing with, um, with employees too. You have to just communicate those things with them and say, these are the things that we're doing. You know, whether it's the budget, whether it's personnel, things, you have to be, uh, straight up and forward with them when, um, when it happens. And not just kind of let them think all of a sudden find out about it. You sort of have to be a little proactive about things with employees specifically. When you're making changes, there are personnel changes, there, there, you know, bylaw changes, you know, there are rules and, and all those sorts of things. I think a lot of times too, you have to involve, you may, you may have to involve in conversations about what, what those changes might be or what, what comes forward with, um, with those things. And it's the same, I guess it's the same thing with, with the citizens, you know. Are there things that, at the town meetings, whether it's a special town meeting or an annual town meeting, is there documentation that we should put out there that was on the town's website that's now available there? Are there things like that, things we should, we should try and do to, um, to give people, to give people information?
So that was speaking to sort of making sure they have information before they have to make a decision?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think so. I think a lot of times. Or, or even, even during just trying to just have information themselves. Just trying to understand what's going on. And it can, municipal finances can be very confusing.
You have to understand that.
What one person thinks, you know, in their checkbook doesn't quite look the same in the finance world.
Moving on. What question do you wish we asked you? What is the answer to that question?
What is the question you gotta ask me? Let's see. Boy, that's a, that's a good question. What question? I think you've actually asked a lot of questions. I'll be honest, I, it's, it's tough of me to ask a lot of questions. I don't know, um, you know, I don't, I guess, uh, experience with borrowing and that sort of stuff. Because I honestly don't have a ton of experience of borrowing other than, you know, or like how that works on the borrowed side of municipal government. That's probably the one thing I, I don't have, you know, experience with as a challenge. I think, you know, if I was asked for challenges, that might be one. You know, other challenges, you know, I guess that would probably be the question I would hope to get asked. Or what are your challenges that you see? And, uh, you know, some of those challenges might be, you know, bringing ideas, challenges of understanding. You know, borrowing, I mean, it was a little confusing the other night kind of on that aspect too, trying to understand it. So trying to figure those things out. You know, I think.
It makes no sense. The way we're doing it makes no sense.
I know. I agree. I agree 100%.
I think I was hearing for the first time after being on the select board for three years, that's the formula for minimum payment? Does minimum payment reflect at all the fact that we've already paid, thinking if it can pay out? Apparently not.
I was confused too.
Either we have it wrong or it makes no sense.
That's why, that's why I just, I, I would be, that would be like the one thing for my challenge is like, how the heck does that work?
I gotta say, last year we had David Eisenfeld, who was the one who was answering the questions. Last year we, we spoke to him twice. And after the first time, and I think we had talked to him for, I don't know, 45 minutes or something. And when we got off, I looked at Justin, I was like, is it just me or do you have no idea what he just spent 45? And Justin's like, and, and I'm like, okay. It's not. It's not just me. Like my feeling about that, like I'm, I'm. Because.
That's a different conversation.
Yeah, I know. But I'm just saying, you're not alone.
Not to get too off topic, but it's been a challenge. And not only is it an understanding, we've actually made actual mistakes.
Yeah, I can, I can understand.
So we've had money that was allocated to pay down a debt and it wasn't all used for no, I don't know why. So.
That may be one of the things that, you know, needs to happen is with the town administrator needs to be a little more aware and on top of the citizens in, in dealing with those sorts of things. But again, you know, going back to challenges, I think, you know, I think one of the challenges is going to be, um, you know, trying to, do you have a town administrators? Do the town administrator for three years, which is the longest serving town administrator? And has been an employee for 19 or so. I don't know what's going to happen. But those sorts of relationships, those sorts of tie-ins with things that have happened are challenges that are going to have to work for, you know, trying, because, you know, nobody trusts the new guy that comes in. They never do. Especially when the new guy is like, has, it's like the boss or something like that. It's always questionable, especially when they, they didn't come up or they didn't work there for a while and left and come back or something like that. There's always, there's always questions about what, uh, what, what's going on and sort of lack of trust. So that, that's, that's, that's a challenge. I guess if you were to ask me a question that, that, that would be like, what are the challenges that you see in this, coming into this position? That would be a good question.
So how would you respond to that challenge?
Uh, like how, well, I think a lot of dealing with the, um, that specific one that I just said with the town administrator, it's really about time and communication and going to those departments and those people and listening to them and seeing what they're looking for and understanding what their needs are and trying to help them with those needs and let them know what the needs are, the direction of the select board and how we're going to move in, in a direction. And again, trying to be civil and not trying to take any side remarks or anything that might come out of it as, as personal and move forward that way. You know, it could be, it, it could be a, a challenge. Certainly be a challenge.
The, the follow-up to that would be this, so one piece is the other people. What challenges do you see in, since you haven't served as a TA? And you're, clearly there's a lot of moving parts to this job. How would you approach coming up to speed to, to get a handle on all the different moving parts?
Well, that's the first step in the door. That's the day-to-day. That's really just looking at day-to-day and meeting the, and going to the staff that, that works on those day-to-day processes. Treasurer, accounting, town clerk, planning, all those sorts of things. Building, kind of working with them on the day-to-day, trying to understand, you know, hopefully getting some feedback from select board, what things might be going on day-to-day. Uh, and really just kind of diving into, to that specific, specific, um, part of the job. And, uh, you know, contacting, you know, one of the things you're gonna have, you're gonna have to find out, you know, contacting those, those staff members to get, you know, uh, into software, pieces of software, connecting with IT, getting, you know, figure out what's going on with IT. You know, familiarizing myself with, uh, you know, different, different parts of the job, website, those sorts of things and, um, moving forward. Just kind of diving in feet first, sort of. You know, nothing is ever, um, you know, we've tried, municipalities have tried for years to write everything down and get everything in one centralized location so that everybody's brain dump happens on a daily basis. And it never works that way. It never does. So, you know, it's, it's just the challenge of trying to figure out where everything is and moving forward and, um, you know, trying to find all those things. I think, I think, again, going back to challenges and going, going to that day-to-day thing, I think, um, you know, like the annual town meetings, not that far away. It's like trying to make sure that, you know, understand, jumping in, warrant all the processes, all the steps, the timing for all that and how that takes place is, is, is going to be a challenge, you know, to, um, just to, because, you know, it's all pretty standard, but it all is a little different. You know, everything's the same but different in, in a way. So it's just trying to figure those, those nuances out. And again, it's, you know, I, I hope that it has, the TA, as a new TA, that there would be some support from the select board as well. So if there are questions you could ask and get the, get the, get pointed in a direction or there might be something there, you'll open up a book and there's, there's something on a piece of paper or, you know, in that sense.
In a similar vein, uh, and kind of as a last question, why should you be selected out of this process?
Um, I think that I have a, um, I think that I bring some good things to the table. I think I bring not only a, a financial outlook on things, I have a pretty good handle on how finances work. I think I, I bring a, um, a collaborative mindset. I think I bring something that, I think I bring that which will help and bring some civility into the, uh, into the mix. I am, I'm not a local boy, but I live locally. So I actually have a, um, you know, I do have some skin in the game when it comes to, to being, uh, you know, part of the community as well. And I think that's important. It, uh, it, uh, you know, you're going to see the people all the time. It's not just going to be why you're here Monday, few Friday or something like that. So I think that's, that's a benefit. And of course, could also be a bad thing. So it could always, because there will be people, I'm sure they will knock on the door. But, you know, I think that, I think I bring that, um, that, um, you know, the budgeting, the, um, the, um, the collaboration. I think I bring, um, you know, the desire for transparency and openness for, um, for something that, uh, you know, people, people are looking for, they're looking for in small government, in small towns. Thank you.
Are there any, or do you have any questions for us?
What's your time frame?
We're having a discussion after your interview. We don't, we don't, uh, you know, we really haven't had any discussion beyond this is the point that we're at in, in the process. So.
Um, no, I, I.
And it's three people too.
Yeah.
And there's only me anymore.
Exactly.
So.
You have to have that conversation.
We have to have a conversation. And really, um, it's been, it's been a, a process that we've been going through and this is where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it. You know, I'm like, I, um, you know, I, I came to Monterey. I have no intentions of being across the table from you for this position. It just sort of happened and I, I appreciate you letting me take the time to, um, you know, have me sit here and I appreciate it. It's, it's been, um, you know, getting to know people and it's been, it's been really nice. So, um, so I, I don't really have, uh, anything more to add other than, um, luck with all this.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are going to welcome public comment.
Question, are we taking questions or just like more comments?
Well, comment and questions, but, uh, you know, it is, it's 7:30. I would say that we could limit public comment to no more than half an hour. And no more than two minutes per speaker if the board is agreeable to that.
I think that's sensible.
Um, I think beyond that point, that's, um, that could be.
I'm going to use the restroom because I've been drinking too much water.
And you don't know about that water. I don't know, but where does the water come from anyway? Who's on the board?
Yeah.
There might be fish involved.
Have you seen the open reservoir? That's our backup water supply.
Is it?
That, that used to be the primary water supply. We've, we've had to spend money like clearing trees out of the reservoir recently.
I'm on a well.
Yeah, well, everybody in the village is on a well, on one well.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Which is amazing. And the state, the state would like to, state would really like to shut it down if we don't get a second well. But they can't because it is the only source for everybody in the village and people can't drill wells in most of the sites because their septic system is 10 feet away. So, but I'm not here for the water company.
I wish it, if it said Tom in that original thing so I could have read it before me.
Susan, I will say that there was betting as to why you were late. I don't know who won and who lost.
Um, the main reason I was late was that, um, I got in my car and realized that my keys weren't in the pocket they're usually in and had to go all the way back to the house to find them. They were, they were in a different car.
Well, one, one of the bets.
That caught me four minutes.
One of the bets was you were, you were gonna blame it on your husband.
Ah, no, it was 100% me. Failure to move keys from pocket to pocket tonight. It was me. It has been my husband on every occasion, but this one was all my.
So, yeah, we'll do public comment and we'll call on people that raise their hands. We only have one person here in person. We have some people on remotely. I think we're going to limit it to no more than half an hour so that we put us at 8:02. And I think as long as it's okay with the board, basically it'll be public comment. If we start to engage, that will limit the amount of time that people have to kind of express their opinions. And please identify yourself if you're going to speak. So we'll start with Steve Moore.
All right. Uh, Steve Moore. So I just have two quick comments. One is I thought those, that was an excellent range of questions. I felt those were, those were good interviews. The second is I was interested in hearing what they had to say about informing the public. I haven't left the paper yet, but, um, and I was going to make one comment and this can't reflect on Roger at all because we don't know, it's fairly new. But there was a period of time when Melissa was writing, um, what she called a town administrator report. And for a little while, a couple of times she did, um, what she called an employee corner that addressed things that were going on for some of the employees. And like if some of the, some of the highway department guys got additional certifications, things like that. And I think that, um, I don't know if you can add that to the TA responsibilities, but I think it was, it's really an excellent function. And as the three of you know, I'm always dunning you for information. And I think, I think it's a good job for the select board to provide that information and some of the topical things you've done. You can actually get more in depth than if you're trying to do it as a whole board and so on. But that was just going to be my comment that going forward, looking to the TA to provide some public statements is really good and can really help with the whole civility question.
Are there any other members of the public online who want to weigh in? Just raise your hand. Ellen. And please identify yourself before you speak. Um, I think they can undo it, but.
Don't forget to unmute yourself.
We can't hear you, Ellen. I'm going to try to unmute you if you can unmute yourself. I'm sending you an unmute request, Ellen.
There goes the two minutes.
Technical difficulty.
Are you seeing an attempt to unmute?
She's got her hands up like I don't know what's going on.
Try, try hitting the mute button and then hitting it again. Sometimes that works. We've unmuted you on our side, so.
It, I, I've sent the unmute request in it. It now says unmute request sent. I can't redo it. If you want to speak, Ellen, you're probably going to have to call in or.
You have something.
Oh, you had it and then you have to back off.
You did something because of I turned. It wasn't.
Uh, it's there.
It only stays for a second.
It's so weird. Are we unintentionally muting that?
No. I mean, I, other people have been able to speak great, not recently, but.
Well, today. Mary did, that's true. Mary's the only one that did today.
Um, Rebecca Wolin, we're going to move Jen Brown.
Jen Brown is hanging up and trying to sign back in. Maybe that would work. And in the meantime, we'll talk to Rebecca and present stuff.
Yeah, so Rebecca, I'm going to send you an unmute request.
There she goes, she's unmuted.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you.
We can hear you. Well, first of all, I did send you all an email this today to tell you how great Beartown Mountain Road is with the new construction. So you did hear something nice, um, today. And I recommend that you really think about redoing other dirt roads in town. But I also want to mention the interviews. I did miss part of Melissa's because I got home from work late. But I do want to say that we should also take into consideration some past behavior, um, from Melissa and the fact that.
Okay, we are, we got it.
Hello?
Yeah, Rebecca. We are just, we've been advised from the AHR consultant that to, well, actually, I don't know. That was more for the board to be positive, public comment.
But there's why they have public comment.
Yeah, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I would just recommend certainly you can take public comment, you're free to express your opinion.
Okay, my apologies Rebecca, keep going.
No, all I was going to say is I really think you need to take into consideration past behavior over the years and that someone doesn't just change their colors overnight. And that we're involved in a major lawsuit that's going to cost people and the town money. And it's all, you know, on her back. And I think going forward, you really need to take that into consideration because even though she sounded great in her interview, you know, that's, that was all well rehearsed it seemed because I, I know how, you know, I've known Melissa for over 10 years and that's not how she normally speaks. So, um, I just want to ask you to take that into consideration as well. That's all.
There's, uh, Rebecca's hand's still waving. I don't know what happened to Ellen.
So for anyone else on the call, I'm mistaken. The board members have been advised to keep, to not be negative, but I'm sorry. The boards, I know there was a case in court over it that boards cannot.
Limit public.
Limit public comment based on content. So my apologies for that.
Would you want to try to find Ellen? I don't see.
Um, I, I suggested she try signing off and signing back on, but I don't see her.
Okay, well wait, Frank's going to use the metronome.
I gotta count. There she is. Ellen, you're not muted. We're ready for you if you want to offer your comment. If you can hear us. Can you hear me now?
Ellen, we can, you look unmuted to us. So maybe, are you muted on your own device? You're unmuted according to the app?
Yeah, we see you as unmuted, but we can't hear you. Try turning up the volume and seeing if that works, but I don't hear at all. Sorry, Ellen. Sorry, Ellen. Tactical difficulties.
For Ellen?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's been unable to unmute herself.
Yeah, she hasn't been able to unmute, exactly. No, we never heard her. It was shown as unmuted, but she was talking and...
We can't do anything about your muteness anymore. It's not even an option, so...
Is it one of the phone numbers when she pauses and you just pick it on speaker?
Okay, then. We've done it before.
Yeah.
I don't know what the number is.
Probably just we got a cell phone.
Yep, it is. Hi, Ellen, you're on speaker.
Hi, I can't figure out a way to unmute. I've tried everything, and it just says I have no access to my microphone, so I'm sorry. I'm on speaker, you can hear me?
Yeah, we can all hear you.
Yeah, we can all hear you.
Oh, okay, all right. Two minutes isn't enough, and now I've wasted all your time with this problem, and I apologize profusely for that. I wanted to ask if there would be another time where there could be a public input. Will you be having an opportunity at the next meeting, perhaps, to let people speak more fully than two minutes?
Ellen, there's no one else currently speaking, so you have the floor. There's no other hands raised. We set aside 30 minutes, so if you wanna use more than two minutes, because there are no other hands raised, I'm not gonna stop you.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, I have... I'd like to make my own comments, and I'd like to then make John's comment, if that's okay. He's not available to speak.
Okay.
The first thing I wanna say is that I don't know Roger, but he... I was impressed with his manner and a lot of what he said. But I was so shocked, actually, that there were no applicants for this position who had any experience as town administrators. I remember when you discussed looking for someone, and I remember who on the board said, "Would be great if we could find a retired town administrator, someone who wants to come back and, you know, resume that job, or somebody who has experience in this sort of work." And so although Roger has a great deal of experience, it's very disappointing to me that you don't have any applicants with experience. And of course, you know I'm a strong supporter of Melissa, and her experience is vast. And so, you know, if somebody else is gonna take over, I just assumed that it would definitely be someone with experience in that position. The second thing I wanted to say was Roger spoke about making a lifestyle change, which, actually, you know, I'm so uncomfortable saying Roger when I haven't even met him. I think I should say Mr. McDonald. Is that his last name, Mr. McDonald? Anyway, he spoke about a lifestyle change, moving to the town, stepping back from stressful situations, stepping back from what he called his political craziness, and making personal changes. And all of that sounds great, and it sounds appropriate for a person in his 60s, which I believe he is. And I... But I wonder, I can't help but wonder if he understands how stressful a job like being town administrator, especially in Monterey after everything that's happened, is. And so that would be something, I think, that would require a great deal of thought on your part for this select board to consider. Wouldn't you want to give someone like Mr. McDonald a chance to have time to get used to the community, to recalibrate his own life changes that he talked about? And also to give him time to get familiar with the job? And that brings me to what I remember, which I thought was a terrific statement, quite a long statement, by Peter Marquette. I don't remember what month it was, it might have been December, but it was the meeting when employees from Monterey came and supported Melissa. The conservation commission agent came to support her. People spoke about her experiences in various ways. And Peter Marquette was the one that I remember most vividly, because I thought he had terrific ideas about how to approach a change in this job if, in fact, the select board wants to make a change. I'm not gonna try to summarize it. I would ask only that you would go back and listen to the recording of that meeting, especially of Peter Marquette's statement, because it would strike me that it would work, what Peter was talking about. It would work with Mr. McDonald, and it would work with... Without removing Melissa totally at this point as a town administrator, because it would be giving her an opportunity to continue. And he spoke about her meeting your expectations and giving her an opportunity to do that. And it would also give the new person, who perhaps would be Mr. McDonald, a chance to learn the ropes. So I hope you'll go back and listen to what Peter said that night. I wanna mention one other thing. I happen to work with a CEO... I work in a capacity as a tutor and counselor. Tutor for English for a Korean expat who is a CEO in America now. And I also am counseling him in some regard as to his position. And he enlightened me tremendously recently about his view of hiring. He said, "I used to believe that interviews and resumes were the best way to figure out who to hire. I no longer believe that," he said to me, and he gave me some reasons why. He said, "What I think has to happen now, having been burned by trusting just resumes as far as Monterey was," of course, we know that story, "or even trusting interviews and resumes. What I think is the best way is to follow up on recommendations. Do it by phone, because then people can speak honestly. Don't trust what's out there in writing. People aren't always as honest in writing or in speaking in public settings as they are when you're home. It's a lot of work to do that, I know, but this is a really important job. I assume that Roger has given you letters of recommendation. I saw Melissa hand in. I hope she gave you five or six or more. I don't know if you would call all of those people, but that would be, to me, an absolute requirement to really get the true picture of what people who work with or worked with the applicant think. So I hope you would do that. Now, the other thing I wanted to say is the last thing that Roger said, I mean, Mr. McDonald said when he spoke to you, was that he had no intention of sitting across from you in that capacity. It just sort of happened, is what he said. I understand that, but I would hope that an applicant for such a serious change in our town history would be someone who was planning that career change in a different sort of way from having it just sort of happen, not having the intention of actually doing it as part of the pattern of a career change. And perhaps, as an old woman, I think of Mr. McDonald as a younger man, and he is 20 years younger, but he still isn't young. And so you would wanna think about where this would be heading and how would we be... What would we be facing five, six, seven years down the road, or maybe even less? Okay, so that's what I wanted to say. And then the other thing is that my husband Donald asked me if I would read his statement that I was reading now.
Ellen, he did send us a letter, you know, that I...
That's what he wants me to read, may I do that?
Well, yeah...
That's what he would say, but he's... Unfortunately, he's not physically able to say what he would wanna say tonight.
That's okay, but we literally have it.
But he wanted it to be read aloud for the recording, can I do that?
Yes.
Thank you. On the one hand, Roger McDonald is apparently an accomplished information technology administrator. If Monterey needed to hire an information technologist, Roger would seem to fit the bill. But for over 23 years, that is all he's done. On the other hand, Melissa has served Monterey for almost two decades as administrator. On every aspect of the TA job description published by this board, Melissa has had many years of actual experience. No reasonable person can deny her honesty, dedication, and skill in administering our municipal needs. She has the respect of the people and the overwhelming support of the other town employees. It is very difficult to understand why this board even considered Melissa's possible dismissal. The issue is not whether you like Melissa or not, nor is it whether you should give satisfaction to that tiny faction of Montereyans who have been trying to destroy Melissa's career for years. This matter has now become a test of the decency and integrity of each select board member. The question is whether you will honestly apply the standards you set for in the TA job description. If you do that, you will continue Melissa as town administrator. That was what he wanted on the record. Thank you, Justin, for letting me read that. Thank you for letting me speak on the phone here. I need Mr. McDonald's IT help, that's all I can say. So, thank you again. Bye-bye.
Okay, so that concludes public comment, because every public, every sound hand is commented. The next thing that we've been advised to do is to have a discussion about the top things that we like from each candidate. So that could either be going, each board member can present, you know, the favorite things that they like about each candidate, two or a few, but maybe not an exhaustive list. Does anyone feel inclined or ready to speak to that?
Can I like... I'd like to take like two minutes to...
Yeah, we can look at notes. We can look at notes, read letters.
Just 'cause we were taking in all the information, I need to go the other way.
Absolutely.
I can be in need that has already drawn the other chair.
You drive back from here?
Yeah.
There's nothing open to get off the... I guess when you get on, I'd be...
When you got a bike then?
Okay.
I was coming home over the weekend, last weekend, 495. There was a traffic accident in St. Bruce.
I don't know.
So I was parked for an hour.
I've seen guys, when I lived in the district, the older stuff, I'd be parked six hours. And do the mistake that all these are school buses, and all these buses get out there, they stop. I miss it all.
Something that occurred to me is that one part that Mary's, um, Accardi's plan never addressed was references.
Yeah, but she said that you offer a job based on references and background checks. So, Mary's here and can speak to it.
Okay.
But I believe one thing that we can do is offer a job pending-
Yes.
-background check, and I believe, uh, initial reference checks have been done.
Certainly, I can speak to that. We did a, a, any offer you make tonight is pending successful negotiations and a background check for either candidate.
Okay.
And initial phone calls were made, but not a full background check.
Okay.
All right. Do we want to sort of recap?
Yeah, so I think i- it would make sense, what are the strengths, um, that people see in each candidate? Um, I can start, or someone else can start it?
I'll start. I'll do what else is available.
Yes. Um, you know-
But firstly, let's-
You know, she, Melissa, you know, she's been here a long time, she knows how municipalities work. She's established a lot of contacts over the years, she can get you answers quickly to what's going on, you know, there's, uh, she knows who to call, there's definitely, you know, she's very good at that. Um, her other, I think, other strength is she, she's gotten the ramps and saw them through, and, you know, she manages them after we went, you know, but, um, the dollar amount is impressive, a dollar amount, but she, you know, she, I think, you know, and I, I think that's, you know, those are, I think, her, two of her qualities that she has.
Um, along the lines of Melissa, I think that two big strengths that I see is the longevity and the institutional knowledge that she has, um, in her head about everything going on in this town, um, who to contact, what the history is. Um, she's built that up over more than eighteen years, um, working in Monterey. Another strength that she mentioned, um, was dependability, and I've also seen it, um, especially, um, with the day-to-day tasks of minutes and agendas and, um, bills. Um, she is reliably gets them done, um.
And I, and after that, keeping the website up to date, I, like, I know that from the DP, people have mentioned that, like, our transfer station is one, is she's recommended to people as, like, the best one out there, which I think is quite remarkable given the size of her town. Um, I, I, you know, like, did I just echo the, the level of institutional knowledge? Um, and her experience as a TA, meaning she actually already knows all the moving parts that are involved in what I think is a pretty complex job. Um, the grant writing, and I will also throw in there that I know that she has, uh, the support of quite a few of our town employees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some of them are in that, um, like, something out of a comment, which doesn't, is an important thing to consider, but is a good thing to keep in mind. Um, plus, I, I agree with the things that you said.
Roger. I think Roger has been a quick learner, um, of our budget process. He knows the right questions to ask, he understands the challenges, he'll do research, you know, he saw a little bit of that with the, uh, IT last night, and it's been a very short period of time he's done that, you know, he's done that. I think he engages well, you know, my experience with him on the Monterey fire companies and the IT, you know, you know, he presents himself well, he listens, he's not, he doesn't shy away from a tough question, but he's very articulate on how he presents it. Um, you know, and I think that, you know, the fact that he's been in the finance committee since, what, last July, you know, he's, he's picked up, he's, to me, he's somebody who's a quick learner, you can see he has budget experience.
Um, I think the strengths that I see in Roger, um, the biggest ones would be the financial knowledge, and also I think the right questions and the out-of-the-box thinking, um, trying to find creative solutions and, and learn about the finances and what he knows about the finances. So, like, municipal finance, and then I think another strength that I see as kind of a skill is the level-headed kind of analytical approach that we've seen throughout the budget process that I think is civil and calm, but also explorative and productive. And he spoke to that a bit during the interview, um, that he kind of emphasizes that, and he did when he managed employees, and that I just think there's something about you.
The financial thing, I think that what he spoke to about having the five constant, five-year capital planning thing, I, his perspective and the way he expressed it impressed me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially because capital planning has been something that's been on our minds a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I basically agree with all the things you guys have said. I also was impressed in the budget meetings in which I sat with him, exactly what you guys were talking about, that he pays attention to small details, but he also has a perspective on the bigger picture. That he asks appropriate questions, but he always seemed to do it in a way that didn't make anyone feel defensive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but encouraged them to answer thoroughly and accurately about the finance, whatever the piece was that was on the table.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I thought his communication skills and sort of social interaction skills were, were excellent.
Mm-hmm.
I was very impressed with that, and I, I also think he is both a quick learner and very open-minded.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all the things, like, you guys use a lot of good adjectives, so, uh, the bad side of coming last. Um, I do think he's a, a really excellent communicator.
Yeah.
Um, which I think is, is super important. Um, and I like that he, he does seem to have a truly collaborative approach. Um, and he certainly brings a, a fresh perspective.
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
Not that we've, from my perspective, I think we've covered it. I mean, God, we've been thinking about this since September.
I know.
Kind of process, you know, not the first guy.
Does anyone have a preferred candidate? And why?
Don't all jump in at once. I had hoped that we would attract a, a, some, at least, a few more candidates that had some direct experience.
I, I, I mean, I gotta say, my preferred candidate is Roger McDonald. I just think that with our finances, I, I just, I, I understand and I appreciate what Melissa has done, what she's been through, but I think that Roger, with his finances, and, you know, it's just, it's, you know, I think, I think he's well-rounded. That's, that's my feeling.
And I don't know if you just want to explain a little bit more about how that, why do you think that is right for our situation?
I, I think it's right because, you know, he, I, I think we, we face, you know, we talk about regionalization, you've got tough capital questions, you know, being able to, you know, come in and do the due diligence on the IT where he was articu-, and I, I agree, it's his field, but he didn't take a simple answer. He got it down, you know, he questioned and questioned these people to do it, on doing it. I saw the spreadsheets he did, here's this list of things we do, I filled it out the price, is this the price, you know? He did his due diligence, it wasn't just about getting a proposal, but he went back with, you know, five and ten questions that I would have never known about. But it's the same way when he's done with the Monterey Fire Company, he was engaged in it, we both walked in not knowing what to expect. You know, he sat in the meeting here when he talked about it, you know, he said, hey, you know, donations have got to, you know, that's got to be part of the formula, you know, he's, he, that's a tough issue to face, you know? But he, he, you know, he, he just keeps working, he just doesn't, you know, I, I don't know, it's just, I, I feel like it's something we, that we're missing. Because he does it, I, I mean, I, you know, the, I think that, you know, my opinion, that he, he's done a lot of, he could do a lot of the finances on the town administrative stuff that sometimes you do or I do. You know, maybe it was because we didn't delegate it out or something like that, but, I mean, you know, he's, you know, he's just, can be part of the job, and I think he, he realizes that, you know, it's a challenge for him to come in here, that he talked about the current TA, being here eighteen, nineteen years, you know, he knows he's gonna have to, you know, burn extra calories, do other things to, you know, provide the leadership and the management, that they'll, they'll, they'll say, okay, I can work for this individual.
I think I would also say that Roger McDonald is my preferred candidate for town administrator. I think that the skill that he has in communication and analysis and also presentation are important for a town administrator and something that would really better fit our town at this time, and also to combine it with that municipal finance knowledge and curiosity and quick learning. Um, it's certainly a very difficult decision, um, but it is reassuring that he not only has those communication skills, but he does also have experience in municipal government, albeit not a, as a town administrator. But it, it's tough, I mean, but I think that my preferred candidate is Roger McDonald.
And I like them both, my, my concern continues to be the loss of the institutional knowledge, um, and all of the balls that the TA has in the air at any given time, um, knowing where to go to get that answer quickly. And some of those things will be quick and easy to learn, and some of them won't be. I, that said, I, I totally appreciate the skills that Roger brings and the open-mindedness and intellect and the communication skills. I'm just anxious about what balls may be dropped in the transition, but that's not always, that's not always a reason to not pursue a new person, but it's a significant consideration and how the transition is made and what balls were, we may have to step in to pick up.
I, you know-
Might be something to remember.
I, I, I mean, I, I'll tell you, you know, I, I've got game, you know, skin in the game, you know, I want it to be successful. I want the, I want the, uh, managers of the department to accept them and to work with them, it's, you know, I'm here to, I'd be here to help them, I mean, you know, it's, it's not a light decision, I mean, you know, I know for myself, through six months, it's been up and down, it's up and down, you know, and, but, you know, I stated my reason why, but, you know, the next stage is that, you know, we agree on Roger going, you know, we'd be all feet to the ground, you know, helping him succeed, you know, it's, you know, it's not, I'm not saying it's gonna be easy, there is no transition, I've been involved in purchasing companies, and I can tell you disasters, but, um, you know, if, if the leadership is right and the management is right, it will smooth that, and, you know, if our feelings are, you know, that feeling long-term, we'll look back and say we made the right decision. You know, it's a tough decision, I mean, she's got some letters here, I mean, that are, you know, very honest, straightforward, I mean, there's sixteen letters in that, you know, I don't take those lightly, she does it, but, you know, our working relationship is different than some of those people's letters, you know, it's, you know, I don't know how to deal with that, but, you know, that, I feel like, you know, we have to make the right decision, you know, and it's a tough decision. I don't think either, anyone's had taken that decision like, you know, we've been through the appraisals, we've done the job description, you know, there's been back and forth, and there's been disagreement, and so I, I think as, you know, I, I, and, um, it's, it's not gonna be easy, I'm, I'm not fooling myself on that.
How are you feeling about the transition process?
It's not gonna be easy, um, for so many reasons. Um, and I, and I don't take it lightly, and I think, um, it's the, it's the long-term view, and it's smoothing out the transition as much as possible. Um, it's utilizing and trying to tap into institutional knowledge where it is, and maybe, you know, being, thinking outside the box about how to do that. But I think one unique thing that we have going on in Monterey right now, uh, is the level of civility and reasonableness that, where we're at, and I don't know, uh, how precisely that will come into effect because it, there's other people involved, and other people can always act, you can't predict, right? But I, I'm hopeful to the degree that I think it's a difficult transition, and it's not to be taken lightly, and I don't take it lightly, uh, it's cause for concern and question, um, but I think if it's the right decision, it's something that we just need to then, then the game plan is how to accomplish that as a productively, civil, kind, um, and effectively as possible. If that's the direction that we agree on, um, and I have some trust and hope that, there's calm, level-headed people involved and problem solvers, and people who are dedicated, not to just, uh, ruining things, but to building, building people up. Um, so, it's hard to predict because of the other people involved to say exactly how that will exactly look, but if it's the right decision, which at this point I believe, it's my opinion that Roger is the right candidate for town, for town administrator, the next question is just how, how, how to get there from here. But I do think that, I do personally believe that that's the right decision at this time. Any other thoughts, Susan?
Um, Tori? I'm torn.
I can understand that.
Yeah, I I like, I think both candidates bring a lot to the table. Um, and I, you know, I think I, maybe I'm too risk averse from the standpoint of being concerned about the transition. Um, I mean, nobody lasts forever. So there's always that. Um, I think I I might have been reassured by someone, by a candidate I liked that also had, really was familiar with the job and had connections. But sometimes that doesn't happen, and people make changes in their positions very successfully. So like, I'm acknowledging my potential risk averseness. Um, I I like them both, and I understand why. It may be time for the town to have a fresh perspective. Um, but that doesn't stop me worrying about the transition.
I I we'd be foolish not to, you know, I mean, we'd be foolish. Um, but you know, you just, I know from experience, you know, the sun's gonna come up tomorrow, and you just keep at it. You know, you know, it's, it it is. I've I've done it twice in my career buying companies that were in the red. You know, you just have to keep at it, and you have to be supportive of the managers. You know, you have to over-communicate. You have to engage. You're gonna, you know, you're gonna have to let things go over your head when they get upset. You know, what are we trying to accomplish? What are we gonna do this week? You know, it's just, and just keep at it and show that, you know, you know, you know, that they're an important part of the organization. And we just, as the select board, has made a decision, we want to change the leadership. And, you know, and I understand these letters that we got, you know, it's always God hears what he shall, Peter. But, you know, our experiences are different, you know?
And change is hard, and people often resist it, even if it's a difficult thing.
Right, mhm, that's true. And that's including us, you know, it's, you know, it's changes, so.
I'm warning that.
You know, but I, you know, I I I, you know, my heart goes out to us. I have nothing against her. But I just feel like we got this opportunity. We got a first-class local that has some diverse skills that can help us financially, that understands the challenge. You know. I I think the rewards are much higher, the potential for rewards are much higher than that.
So what's the next step?
The next step would be.
Do we go into executive session?
The next step would be a motion to offer Roger McDonald the town administrator job pending background check and successful negotiations. Um, as I see it, I mean, the board could vote whatever they want to do. The board could say table it. The board could say do whatever they want. They can't do whatever they want. But based, what I'm reading based on the conversation is that's the next motion. Based on that motion, I think then there would probably be an opportunity enter executive session. I know it's late, but I think it's also important to get the ball rolling on a smooth transition.
And come to closure.
And come to closure.
Hard on people to be left in the book.
Yeah, I I think so, because they, we have to respect, they have their lives. We we can't, my personal opinion, we can't really have that. It's not fair. You know, you know, I mean, I know the anxiety and the stress I get from them. I don't, you know, I mean, you know, you just have to respect that you, you know, you want them to be successful in their future endeavors and all that, but you know, we just gotta make it. So do you want me, I will make a motion that we make Roger McDonald our next town administrator based on.
Pending background check.
Pending background check and.
Successful.
And successful contract negotiation.
So just to reiterate, that's a motion to make Roger McDonald the next town administrator pending background check and successful contract negotiations.
Yes, that's correct.
I'll second the motion. Is there any other discussion or public comment before we vote on the motion? There being none, we'll call it.
I vote yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna vote yes too.
So that motion carries. Um. Uh, the next order of business would be to vote on entering executive session purpose two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, in this case, the town administrator. A quick question for town council. Based on this posting.
Yep.
I can make a vote, I can make a motion, uh, and I I guess I just want you to listen to it.
Yeah.
Um, I move that the select board enter executive session purpose two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town administrator, for town council and Mary Accardi of the common center to be present in addition to the board. And for the board to not re-enter open session after the conclusion of the executive session.
That would be just fine, as you said.
I'll second.
It would be a roll call vote.
Yeah, so that's a second, and then we will take a roll call vote on entering executive session. So Susan.
Yes.
Frank, you know, and Justin will vote yes. So that's unanimous. Vote to enter executive session.
So what do we do, turn off and open it again for?
Yeah, we're gonna enter executive session at eight twenty PM.
Right, close the door and then make sure that the only remote participant.